Welcome, everyone. I'll call the meeting to order of the Planning Commission, January tenth, two thousand and eighteen. Roll call, please.
Chair Kirth.
Here.
Vice Chair Porter.
Here.
Commissioner Huber. Commissioner Dew.
Present.
Commissioner Marsh.
Here.
Please rise for the invocation and pledge of allegiance led to us by Commissioner Porter and Commissioner Marsh.
Bow your heads. Heavenly Father, thank you for all the blessings you have given us. We are grateful to have the opportunity to live free democracy that gives opportunity to guard our own destinies, our opinions in a public forum.
Right hand over your heart. Begin.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivi-
Okay, we have a set of minutes that needs to be approved for the December thirteenth, two thousand and seventeen meeting. Yes.
Select on item number- All right, the City Council to the workshops.
Second.
We have a motion by Vice Chair Porter and a second by Commissioner Dew to approve the minutes of the regular planning commission meeting of December thirteenth, two thousand and seventeen. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Commissioner Huber abstains from this vote. Any opposed? The regular planning commission meeting minutes of December thirteenth are approved with Commissioner Huber abstaining from the vote.
Thank you. All right, agenda, item number one, staff report, please.
Thank you Chairman Kirth, fellow commissioners. Item number one is case PLN seventeen dash zero 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 three six. It is a conditional use permit in site plan to allow for a wireless communication facility stealth as an eighty-foot-high windmill with an environmental exemption. This is located at one six six nine nine Starter Wells Road. This is the location of the Apple Valley Gun Club located adjacent to Interstate fifteen. Propagation maps have also been included to provide demonstration the need for the cellular tower along with justification for the location and height. Additionally, there is a add-on condition. Staff's requesting that a condition be added to the site plan and conditional use permit requiring the applicant to provide for co-location. This is not a requirement that they do, but structurally the tower should allow for additional antenna panels if they sublease this to an additional provider. With that, staff notes that the proposal meets all requirements of Title sixteen and we're available if you have any questions.
Thanks. Any questions? Okay, I'll go ahead and open up the, uh, the public hearing on agenda item number one if there's anyone here to speak to us on, on one.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. My name is Andrea Urbas. Think I'm a little too close. And I am representing the applicant, which is Verizon Wireless. I work for J five Infrastructure Partners. And I'm here basically just to ask for your support and acknowledge the major effort it took with staff to come up with a viable solution. I think we have a very good solution, thanks to them. So, thank you very much. And I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions, the applicant?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else here to speak to us on item number one? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for a decision. I would like to say real quick to staff and the applicant, um, that's a very interesting design. I think it fits really well with that area, especially with the gun club. And we've seen such an evolution of the cell towers, you know, coming along trying to mask. In our last meeting, we saw pine tree that looked actually like a real pine tree. Looks pretty good, the, with the windmill, so, thanks. You have a motion?
Chairman, uh, I'll move to find-
We have a motion by Commissioner Huber and a second by Commissioner Dew to approve case PLN seventeen dash zero 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 three six as conditioned. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Item PLN seventeen dash zero 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 three six has been approved as conditioned.
Thank you. Item number two, staff report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. Agenda item number two is a tentative tract map to allow for the development of a two hundred and seventy-one lot single-family residential subdivision with a mitigated negative declaration. It's case number PLN sixteen dash zero 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 two eight and otherwise references tentative tract map two zero zero six four. As noted, the two hundred and seventy-one lot single-family residential subdivision located within our one zone will consist of seven two-hundred square foot lots and approximate density of three point three units per gross acre on the approximately eighty-acre building site. As proposed, the applicant has worked with staff to design a map that meets our single-family design guidelines, uh, including curvilinear streets, cul-de-sacs, and, and pie-shaped lots, um, and amenities in the form of dual-use basins, so the basins can be utilized as a recreational amenity when they're not being used in a storm event. As proposed and as conditioned, the proposal meets all requirements of Title sixteen and seventeen. Additionally, uh, there were some late comments received by the Native American Heritage Commission, the Department of Transportation, uh, and neighboring property owners, which have been addressed in a late edition memo. That being said, staff supports the proposal as conditioned and with the addition of the, uh, updated condition noted in the late edition memo.
Okay, thank you. Any, uh, questions for staff? I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing on item number two. Is there anyone here to address the commission on number two?
Good evening, Chairman Kirth and members of the commission. My name is Jesse Nash. I'm with Joseph Bonneman and Associates, the civil engineer for the project, uh, representing the applicant. Um, I'm here to answer any questions related to the project and I would like to extend, uh, thanks to city staff for their considerable effort and, uh, support on the project.
Thank you. Any, uh, questions for the applicant? You are aware of the, uh, just very recent updated condition, um, that we saw in our staff report? It's a condition number thirty-six. Heritage Commission?
Uh, yes.
Are you familiar with that?
Yes.
Just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else to speak to us on number two? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back for a determination.
Chairman, I move to adopt the mitigated negative declaration with, uh, a mitigation monitoring and reporting program for the project and move to adopt resolution P eighteen zero one, um, approving the tentative tract map subject to all conditions with an updated condition number thirty-six.
We have a motion by Vice Chair Porter and a second by Commissioner Huber to approve case PLN sixteen dash zero 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 two eight as conditioned. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Case PLN sixteen dash zero 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 two eight is approved as conditioned.
Approved, thank you. Number three, please.
Thank you Chairman Kirth. Item number three is case PLAN seventeen zero 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 twelve. It is an extension of time with an environmental exemption for a tentative parcel map one nine five six eight to allow for the creation of two parcels from one parcel within an existing shopping center. This is located at the northwest corner of Bear Valley Road and Amethyst Road. The proposal would essentially split an existing parcel that holds the, the, uh, CVS and the former Albertson's into two parcels. Um, this, this map was originally approved by the commission in January of two thousand and fifteen. Uh, the applicant seeking a, an extension of time, which is allowed by the subdivision map act. And, uh, the proposal hasn't changed since the original application was submitted to you and staff recommends approval as conditioned.
Thanks. I'll open up the, uh, public hearing on item number three if there's anyone here. Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing on item number three and bring it back to the commission.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to find the project category categorically exempt under section fifteen three fifteen entitled Minor Land Divisions of the state guidelines to implement, uh, the California Environmental Quality Act, CEQA, and adopt Planning Commission Resolution number P dash eighteen dash zero zero two approving case number PLAN seventeen dash zero 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 one two.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Marsh and a second by Commissioner Dew to approve case PLAN seventeen dash zero 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 one two as conditioned. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Case PLAN seventeen dash zero 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 one two is approved as conditioned.
Thank you. Uh, number four, uh, we have a, um, request for this item to be continued to our March fourteenth, two thousand and eighteen meeting. Um, I'll open up the public hearing on item number four if there's anyone to speak to us. Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing and I'll make a motion can, to continue this item to the Planning Commission meeting of March fourteenth, two thousand and eighteen.
We have a motion by Chair Kirth and a second by Commissioner Huber to continue case PLN seventeen dash zero 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 two zero to the regular planning commission meeting of March fourteenth, two thousand and eighteen. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Case PLN seventeen dash zero 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 two zero will be continued to the March fourteenth regular planning commission meeting.
Thank you. And item number five, uh, same thing, a request, uh, for a continuance to our February fourteenth, two thousand and eighteen meeting. I'll open up the public hearing on number five if there's anyone here to speak to us. No one, I will make the motion, uh, continue this item to the Planning Commission meeting of February fourteenth, two thousand and eighteen.
Second.
We have a motion by Chair Kirth and a second by Commissioner Marsh to continue case PLN sixteen dash zero 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 two nine to the regular planning commission meeting of February fourteenth, two thousand and eighteen. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Case PLN sixteen dash zero 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 two nine will be continued to the regular planning commission meeting of February fourteenth, two thousand and eighteen.
Thank you. In compliance with the Brown Act, it's necessary for the planning commission to make available time for members of the public to address the planning commission on items of interest that fall within the planning commission's subject matter jurisdiction. Is there anyone here to speak to the commission tonight?
Uh, excuse me, the, uh, my name is Paul Smith. And I have property, uh, located on E Street in Victorville, between the Sixth Street and the, uh, the Oregon Wash. And, uh, there've been changes to our property since we acquired it, uh, forty years ago or whatever. And, uh, you're familiar with the flood control and their phase, uh, three, uh, that starts at the freeway and comes up the river and the changes they've been making. They've been going down, we have Beaver Dam now, uh, adjacent to our property on the Mojave River. And, uh, there's about forty of those animals that are not, uh, hereditary to the area. They were brought in, but, uh, they're, uh, they've gone down and, uh, with heavy equipment going down to the water level. And the beavers, they moved it out and the beavers were able to put their home back together overnight. And, uh, and they're extending it now. The river's about five to s- to ten feet deep where these, uh, uh, animals are living. Um, there's other things that have occurred, uh, with the Apple Valley Construction Company that have had immense equipment in there. I've never seen equipment that large, but it has changed the whole, uh, what we did when we bought the property. Uh, the council, uh, had, no, it was before the council, uh, that they, um, no, I guess the council was, we had the city of Victorville at that time. I've been here, and my daughter has been here since she was two years old and she's in her sixties now. So, we've been around a while. Uh, we have the flood control, we have the engine, the first engineer, Harry Weaver, uh, and his son who has taken his father's, uh, responsibilities in many things. And the first river walk was designed at that time. Uh, with the dentist, uh, third generation that, uh, has all of the history background of Victorville. And then Fran Elgin, when I taught at Victor Valley College, she was, um, one who I gave over a hundred interviews by old timers. They had to be, uh, here at the turn of the century. And so that material she, uh, has kept and they edited, never edited, they translated all of that material. We have a lot of the maps of the city of Victorville and, uh, with the quarry, the, uh, the, um, the rock that were used in building many of the building in Los Angeles, right in that area, just north of where the Oregon Wash is or toward Highway eighteen. So, we have all of those maps. We have pictures, not maps, but pictures, and we have the map of the first subdivision that occurred in, in our city and most of you are familiar probably with that. And, uh, so we have volumes of material. When you live my age and you're teaching history and political science and those types of things, serving on the city council and, uh, doing many things that, uh, it's a little hard at eighty-eight years of age to recall all of the activities, but we do have them on record. And, uh, my concern at the present time is that Apple Valley Construction, good people, uh, but, uh, they've left a mess. When we bought the property, uh, the first action that was taken, legal action, was to condemn a fifteen-foot right-of-way that went through our property, right through the center. And I thought, oh, man, uh, M, at that time, we did not have M one and that type of stuff. It was any, you could build anything on the high desert. Uh, it was all zoned, uh, for that purpose. If you could make a living and, uh, pay your taxes, uh, you had the property. It's changed a lot, uh, just bringing it up to date and that type of thing and spending a hundred dollars with a bulldozer and moving a little dirt around. It's a different picture now and it's a different life that we're living. And so, my concern at this point is that, uh, the river, I've never seen it look so bad. Uh, I know commission was established, uh, with the fire department, the, uh, planning department. And, uh, and the city, uh, has taken on the responsibility of taking care and protecting the indigent people that have moved into the area. And they would bring, uh, two vans full of prisoners from the LA area that were given a thousand dollars, uh, by, at Los Angeles, uh, county if they were to locate outside of the Los Angeles county. And, uh, many of them have come to San Bernardino. Many of them have settled, uh, in the trees down at the river. And that's where they, uh, take their baths and stuff. And, uh, so the city did, uh, est- establish, uh, a, it took on a responsibility to protect those people, uh, from bad weather and, uh, the flooding that has taken place, uh, in the area. And, uh, to protect life and, uh, the, so that, I've never seen the river since I've been here, which has been a long time, that is so destroyed. Uh, and people taking trailers after, uh, five o'clock or whatever and, uh, are parking them between the Oregon Wash, some of them, to the Highway eighteen. They get stuck in the sand. They cannot move them. I haven't gone by to see what happened, uh, last night uh, with the water that was coming through where they were trying to get their trailers. I've been trying to help people. That's my responsibility. I've been a pastor when I first came to Victorville. And, uh, anyway, uh, I wish that the commission would, uh, the, um, would just take a tour and have many people and I'd be happy to take anyone on a river walk that was established by our first, uh, city engineer, Harry Weaver. And it's Harry Weaver's son who's living at, at Big Bear, in Big Bear. And he's, uh, offered to, uh, review the river walk that was first financed, uh, by the state or somebody to, uh, to, uh, go up the river. He would take tours up the river to the college. And, uh, then they changed that route and, uh, they take it up Seventh Street, uh, to the old Hesperia Road. And then they go in at, uh, at the Graham's property. And then they go in at, uh, at the Graham's property. And, uh, this is where we have the new highway going across the river between Bear Valley and Hesperia Road. This is much of it is, is the, uh, these young kids that were in my Sunday school when they were, uh, four and five years of age, but anyway, they, they know.
Mr. Smith, the, the history sounds fascinating. I could listen probably all night to a lot of that history and I know you, I know you probably have a lot to tell, but we do, we do have to.
Too much.
I wanted to, um, just ask you real quick, um, this is not an agenda items, we can't discuss or make any decisions, but I did want to ask at the beginning of your comments, you, did you have a specific problem with your property and the wash that you are addressing to the city? Is that what you were?
We have a problem at the present time.
Are we familiar with where he's talking about?
Um, no, but we will send out.
Somebody could take a look at that?
Staff and to identify.
And then also if you could, um, out in the foyer, if you could fill out one of the white cards?
Yes, sir.
With your name and contact information?
Yes, sir.
And turn it into Jennifer over here at the end. And then that way we'll have your information should staff need to contact you on that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much for your time, sir.
Oh, the other thing is access to the property.
I think, I think if staff says that they're gonna look into.
Okay.
That information and get your card.
Yeah, the railroad has changed their.
You can bring that up with.
Yeah, they've changed their direction. They've moved from the track that used to be on the other side of the railroad tracks going to, uh, D Street. And, uh, the, and that, uh, and they, that's no longer, uh, the railroad, that, the park that was there was the railroad, the old Gibson lumber. And the property on, was all on the other side.
And, and these comments are made.
Now on our side.
These comments are made part of the record, just so you know also. And so, please address those with, um, with staff and please fill out a, um, a card so that contact can be made. Would it be Bell and Roll in the department?
We'll, we'll get, if it's not us or if it's not our property, then, but we'll get that information to you.
There is city property between our property and the river.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, yes, sir.
If I'm not mistaken, I, I thought, um, the gentleman had also brought up Apple Valley to some degree and one of the things that I'm interested in is whether or not there is responsibility on behalf of Apple Valley as well, the town of Apple Valley as well and the city of Big Bear.
Thought he was referring to Apple Valley Construction, who was doing the Mojave Narrows project, so, but we can, we can look in that, into that as well.
Thank you. You go back.
Is there anyone else to speak to us tonight? This time we'll have a opportunity for members to present items of interest. Marsh, anything?
I have nothing.
Mr. Porter?
Um, yes, I want to thank you for, um, a partial cleanup of that lot that's, that's, uh, north of my property. Uh, they, they, what they did was they took all the, the great big hunks of concrete out, but there's, uh, telephone poles and debris.
Bill? Okay. All right, duly noted.
I, I can bring you pictures if you want. Bring you pictures.
No, that's all right, I believe you.
Mr. Huber? Who?
I will say that, um, last year was a pretty good year and I'm looking forward to a very positive and, uh, progressive year this year. And I enjoy working with my fellow commissioners and, uh, and enjoy the, and value the, uh, expertise of the staff.
Um, I have nothing, any, uh, any comments from staff?
Yes, just related to, um, Ms. Porter's comments regarding the invitation to the city council. And we did go back and listen to the minutes because we didn't quite pick up on that originally after, at the meeting, uh, the, the desire to have council actually, the joint workshop. So, that is going to the council at their next meeting next week, so.
I just think that, um, that it's, it's complicated and I think that everybody has to get the same information at the same time and it really makes a big difference. And, um, I also, uh, had some stuff on marijuana medical medical trial that I want to give to you that a friend of mine received.
All right.
And, uh, because I think that they're, they're trying to get people to go out of the area and, and get it.
Gotcha.
Thank you everyone, uh, meeting adjourned.